Turn on the microphones here. Good afternoon. Let me call to order a special meeting of the St. Helena City Council for January 31st, 2017. Mr. Doring, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Koberstein.
Here.
All right. That takes us to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the council on any matter, on matters not on our agenda. It's limited to three minutes. Does anybody wish to speak at public comment? Yes. Ms. Ren.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Mary and Jeff and thank them for their willingness to take on such responsibility. It's truly grateful that we have people like you. And I live at 2705 Spring Street here in St. Helena, and I'm also on the board of We Care Animal Rescue. And my purpose here today is to thank the Public Works Department, especially Glenn Price and Carlos Uribe, for what they did for us when we had the possibility of flooding a few weeks ago. They are also on Charter Oak at the corbeart, and multiple times they came to us to let us know what was happening, what the possibilities were. We were totally prepared with sandbags, but Glenn did come and tell us that there was a chance of flash flooding, and if there was, we would have maybe no more than five minutes to be able to get out of Charter Oak. I contacted GOTS. They told us to park our vehicles up there. We're grateful to them for that. We moved all of our computers, our printers, phones, everything from the shelter, had the animals up at higher ground, and we were notified again that we had just a few minutes if it did occur. We were totally prepared, thanks to our shelter manager, but mostly to Glenn and Carlos for constantly keeping us informed of what could have happened. Several years ago, before the new pumping system was put in, we were flooded. So we knew what could happen, but we are so grateful to them, and I just wanted everybody else to know that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was much excitement that day.
Thank you for your comments.
Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Let me close a public comment, and then we'll proceed to new business. And the new business relates to the Turley project. I won't try and read in all the agenda material here, but in any event, let me turn to Mr. House. This is really a continuation of a discussion that we began at our last city council meeting.
Before we start, I wanted to have some clarification under public comment on an agenda item that I had put on the calendar a couple of weeks ago. We have a public comment which allows us to do that or not?
Mr. Brown? I'm not sure I'm following what it was that you put on.
Well, I proposed agendizing a couple of issues related to the water and sewer rates, and I wanted to clarify when those are coming back because it was left unclear.
That's certainly appropriate for a brief, very brief discussion, but that, the Brown Act does allow that discussion.
Yeah. Well, my understanding from staff is that pursuant to prior direction, they will be coming back to us on February 24th.
24th or 28th, but it's the last meeting in February. We'll bring those items back.
Well, may I clarify that because it was unclear to me which of those items will be brought back on the 24th? In the minutes that we had prepared for the last meeting, there was a discussion. It said, "Overview of various financial mechanisms with detail on cost assumptions. Provide a review of the bond covenants and how they work. Provide a summary report on the major projects, including what is paid for through grants, loans, or cash. Evaluation of perceived inequities and allocation of fixed costs and between user groups. Review these items with the new interim city manager for further discussion once on staff." And the question is, are all of those going to be on the 24th or?
Yes. So all four items that are listed there is what Director Palmer and I will both be reporting back on on the second meeting in February.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that's what you're concerned? Yeah.
Yeah. I also had agendas, a meeting and at Larry's, or an item, and at Larry's request, I agreed not to have it carry over today. It was on our prior agenda, and I have specifically requested that we discuss and vote on whether to create a new ad hoc committee if we are really going to get back into the rate study to work with the staff, residents from town, and some financial expert. So I would like that on the agenda on the 14th. I think I mentioned using bond counsel in further discussions. It's apparent to me that at this step, maybe there's somebody who's more like a public finance person who advises municipalities, and I think it's really crucial that we have input from our staff, and then we also have sort of a neutral, knowledgeable party working with us so that we can kind of bridge some misunderstandings that we might have or misapprehensions. So I would like that on the agenda if we decide to appoint a committee. I'd expect we'd be working side by side with April and probably Steve and kind of undertake what we did before.
You mentioned the 14th, but did you mean the 28th?
No. Because this was on the agenda last time, and we didn't get to it. And it was supposed to be on, would have been carried over to today, but I understand we want to focus on this and get this done, so I would, I would want it on the 14th.
I would urge you to agree to put it on the 28th. It's more orderly that way, and it's in the context of a broader discussion that gets into some of the details that would relate to that discussion as well.
Well, you know, with all due respect, I don't want to do that. This is, you know, I think we should address it with the same urgency that was given the first time around. If we're going to change anything, I think we need to have our discussions and get our information and be pretty much finished by June in order to comply with Prop. 218 requirements if we're going to change the rates. And so I would like to get the word out there. If a majority of the council goes along, get a committee formed and with the hope that maybe, you know, we could have a study session shortly, you know, as soon as April has her information ready. And it's going to take us a little while to find a financial advisor who would step in, you know, and meet with us once or twice. So I would, I would really prefer it on the 14th.
Well, as I said, the mayor's position is that it's more orderly to do it on the 28th. You, as a council member, have the right to put a matter on the agenda on the 14th, so there we are. Does staff have any comment with respect to what it feels is the appropriate way to go here?
Well, I urged Councilmember Koberstein to consider moving it from today to the 14th so we could provide clear focus on the issues before us in this rather complex agenda item today. The 14th was my understanding, and I was, I was grateful for her agreement to move it from today to the 14th.
I think the 14th is fine, and I do agree with you, Mayor, that there may be some overlap in terms of the issues, and it may be, parts of it may be premature until the other segments come forward, but we can decide that on the 14th. I think that would be fine.
All right. Well, again, she has the right to put it on the agenda, so there we are. Okay. Any other comment that would take us?
Well, I'm sorry. One thing I would ask is if we can, because there'll certainly be a large turnout for that, those items related to the water and the wastewater, so it might be something to think about to put it towards the beginning of the meeting to make sure we get to it. That's just a thought.
All right. Okay. Any further comment before we get to the matter at hand? Then we get to the matter at hand, and Mr. House?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. As mentioned, the item before the council today is a request from Calistoga Affordable Housing for some additional funding. They actually requested $140,000, but $200,000 is before the council, and I'll get into the details in explaining some of the elements. I would like to mention that staff's involvement has been somewhat limited up until recently. City Manager Phillips was taking the lead on this issue, and with her departure, it fell to my department to bring it on in the city attorney's office. Ms. Block is here to assist. She's been reviewing and preparing the loan documentation, so she'll have more of the answers to some of more of your technical questions. So I'm just here kind of as an usher and a shepherd of this project for, to hopefully get it before you in somewhat of a final form. So just wanted to let you all know that. So if I lean to the developer or Ms. Block to answer some questions, just please understand. So the project before the council today is four individual items. One is the consideration of a request from Calistoga Affordable Housing for up to an additional $200,000 beyond previous commitments, which have been characterized as $500,000, but I'd like to get into that a little bit more, too, and authorize previously committed funds to be, begin to be drawn down as the project expenses begin to roll in. And as identified in the staff report, up to $60,000 of that additional 200 is characterized as a contingency for the project to address unforeseen expenses that arise through construction. Also before the council today is approval of the loan documents for the Turley Flat Affordable Housing project, and this includes the loan document itself, the regulatory agreement, the promissory note, and the deed of trust. Before the council, in addition, is acceptance of an emergency vehicle access easement across 1127 Pope Street, which is a parcel just to the west of the project site, for fire department access to the rear of the property, and then authorization of the city manager or their designee to sign for loan docs on behalf of the council in substantially the same form. The $500,000 previously committed is actually about $400,000 in funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
(noise)
I was thinking fire drills. Is actually, that's right. Buzzer for staff these days.
Yeah.
It's actually $400,000 in Affordable Housing Trust Fund monies, and then $100,000 in development impact fees, which are found to not apply to the project. So that's an important distinction, and that'll, I'm sure, become part of the discussion later on. As I mentioned, up to $60,000 of the additional 200 is requested as a contingency, and then the language that's included in the document and the resolution, "designee" and "substantial form," they're both important in that we still anticipate some revisions to these loan documents to occur. So there's a commercial lender that's involved, and the applicant has requested the county to grant additional funds. All of those parties have to agree on the stipulations in each of the documents, and so staff does anticipate some revisions to those. If they're in substantially the same form, obviously, the city manager would move forward. If there was something that was not in substantial conformance with the current documents, we would bring that back before the council for their review. I have reached out to the county. We have been playing phone tag essentially and have not been able to connect. Mr. Coleman may have more, an update on where the county is. It's my understanding, based on previous discussions, they plan to bring the item before the Board of Supervisors in the near term, but I think we're hoping to hear action from the city first to inform their presentation to the board. So with that, get into a little bit of the project history. On, in October of 2012 and July of 2013, the city council previously committed Affordable Housing Trust Funds for the project totaling $158,000. However, this, as I mentioned, is a combination of money to cover approximately $58,000 in fees for the project in addition to finding that $100,000 in development impact fees do not apply. So if you read through the documentation that was provided in your report, you know, the characterization of that money has changed throughout the documents. I think primarily just probably been a result of different staff members working on it, different input from the attorney's office, those types of things, but staff needs to be very clear in what is before the council today. The remaining fees or funds from the trust fund are proposed to come in the form of a loan to the project from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that's also very important because prevailing wage requirements begin to kick into the project should they receive any gift of public funds, and so that's an important distinction. In August of 2013, the planning commission approved the project. In October of 2014, the city council approved a total of $500,000 in Affordable Housing Trust Fund money to support the project. Again, $100,000, however, was impact fees found to not apply to the project. I'm sorry. And then in October of 2016, the council considered a request for the additional $140,000 from Calistoga Affordable Housing to address increases in construction costs. However, at that time, the council identified some specific concerns regarding the overall financing of the project and the timing of the financial awards, and so that was brought back at the last council meeting. Fortunately, we ran out of time, and so here we are today. In an effort to provide some additional background, this is just the elevations proposed for the project. It's eight total units, three stories in height, two and three bedroom units, and it's an important distinction to identify that the project was actually approved to be a combination of moderate, low, or very low units. The applicant is committed to all of those eight units being low or very low. So that's an important distinction because there are additional financial implications resulting from that increased limitation. If you read through some of the background on the project, the moderate units were approved in order to provide some additional rent revenues to the developer in order to offset some of their costs. Their commitment to reduce them all to low or very low actually provides less operating revenue to the developer, so could be characterized as one of the elements that increase their overall project costs, but also provides direct benefit to the city with regards to meeting the Calderon lawsuit settlement because moderate units would not have applied to that settlement, I believe. The city attorney could correct me if, if, yeah, but I've checked and I'm, yeah, moderate units do not count.
Okay.
This is the site plan for the project. You can see, you know, the ground floor is actually parking and storage for the multifamily units. As a planner, storage is also always important for multifamily housing, so I was happy to see that that had been improved in the original entitlement. The project is served by elevators. It does have ADA requirements which it meets, and then there's some hardscape for outdoor area. So getting into more of the discussion of the project, Calistoga Affordable Housing has been working since the past approvals of funds to, on both construction bids and financing for the project, and I'll let Mr. Coleman get into details on that, and the city has been working with the applicant to prepare the documents associated with this project. Calistoga Affordable Housing has identified that they have secured a bank loan for $1.3 million from a commercial lender to cover construction costs. However, over the two-year time period that Calistoga Affordable Housing has been seeking additional funding, construction cost estimates have continually increased. As we all know, the cost of construction upstate has increased considerably since the original timelines for the approvals. And in response to that, Calistoga Affordable Housing reached out to the county in Napa for an additional $650,000 in addition to asking the city for an additional $140,000. After the last presentation to the council in late 2016 regarding that $140,000, staff discussed the project with the county, and the county identified some concerns. While they're, they're willing to consider providing additional loan funds, their concerns are primarily related to kind of unforeseen circumstances and the ability to finance some of the, these unforeseen costs that could arise through the construction process, so contingencies essentially. So based on that, staff amended the $140,000 increase to $200,000 to address some of those concerns that the county has, and also frankly, to provide some further surety to the council that unforeseen things could be addressed through the development process. And as I mentioned and identified in the staff report, it's anticipated that this decision will go before the county in relatively near term, and we don't have a date set yet, but they did clearly identify that their decision would be based somewhat on the, on the decision by the city council in their funding of the project. Any funds that are identified or requested would be directly tied to invoices, receipts, and requisitions, so should the council choose to approve the documents tonight, checks are not issued. That just essentially grants the, identifies the support for the council and ties the dollar amount that then the applicant can go to work with the commercial lender and the county and having our support in his back pocket through that process. But again, no monies would be issued until all three agencies or entities, or actually, I should say four because the developer's involved as well, are in agreement on all of the loan terms, and any questions about, you know, who's in first and second place on the collateral, et cetera, would all be worked out. Currently, the documents read that the primary lender, commercial lender's in first place, which is always required, and the city is identified as in second place on the loan. The county may have some concerns over that. Frankly, if we're giving this amount of money, we'll be granting more than the county is in our loan fund, so I think the city would push to remain in second place. Obviously, if that changed, we would bring that back before the council. The regulatory agreement that's attached to this is the document that formally commits all eight units in the project as affordable to low or very low incomes and limits the amount that the rents can be charged to the residents, and this is for a 55-year term. So this is a significant commitment. I mean, these are low and very low units for 55 years if they are approved and constructed. There's a promissory note in the document which lays out repayment terms of the $700,000 loan as it's currently characterized, or the amount that's currently in the document. Again, city's in second position, and the loan repayment schedule is also an important fact, is essentially based on 25% of surplus funds received by the developer, so monies received in rents in excess of the cost of managing the project. Then 25% of those would go towards repayment of the loan, 25% go towards repayment of the county's loan, and 50% go towards repayment of the commercial development loan, or developer's loan. Sorry, commercial lender's loan. It's important to note that the city does not expect to receive significant repayment over the term of the 30 years based on these very small amounts of money that are able to be paid from the residuals of the low-income rents. Rather, the repayment is more anticipated to be addressed either at the end of the 30-year term through a balloon payment of some type should the property owner refinance the project, et cetera, or there are provisions currently in the document which talk about if the applicant were to refinance the project, it gives the city the ability to require them to repay the loan fully. Some of the concerns would be that if that language wasn't identified clearly, then the developer could refinance the loan and pull additional money out of the project such that when they got to the end of the 30-year term, there's no funds left to actually repay the city in whole on any remaining balance. So from the staff perspective, there are a lot of hooks, you could say, and controlling language as to how any refinance funding could be utilized or pulled out of the project. Some of those language changes are driven or were resulted in some of the last-minute changes or late changes that were provided to the council, and staff does apologize for the timing. Again, we've been kind of trying to scramble to meet everyone's deadlines, and so it's been somewhat of a challenge. And I do appreciate Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Koberstein's input and concern on some of the language in the loan, as I feel that the document is a lot stronger now with regards to that. Similarly, there's a deed of trust before the council which provides a security interest in the property. It's essentially the collateral for the, for the home. And the emergency vehicle access is very straightforward, but we do need, I think the mayor is currently listed as the signatory on it, so we want council support for the mayor to be able to sign for that. It's important to discuss this project in the context of the Calderon lawsuit settlement. Construction of these units would allow the city to meet the next milestone, which is December 31st, 2018, where required to have six additional, I'm sorry, four additional low-income units constructed or approved, or the general fund is required to pay an additional $500,000 into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund if that milestone is not met. This project would meet that milestone if they were constructed by that timeframe. There's numerous limitations put on what units can qualify, and so given that there is not any other applications pending, and the amount of time it's taken this project to get through the process, staff feels this, this is the only viable option that's currently staff is aware of to meet that milestone, and any project that would come forward in the future would have less than 24 months in order to meet the requirements of the Calderon lawsuit. So that's an important element for the council to consider in the review of this request. So getting to the financial impacts. So as mentioned, there's a number of characterizations of the funding. It is purely a loan, or the found, the project was founded not trigger impact fees. So there's no subsidies, there is no fee waivers proposed as a part of this project, contrary to what some of the previous approvals, the language in some of the previous approvals. It's important to note that, given the prevailing wage context and elements that staff mentioned earlier, and we just wanted to reiterate that. However, if you look at that, there's been $500,000 committed to the project in two different, in resolution 2014-101, but $100,000 of that was actually not required to be paid by the project. There's an additional $140,000 that's been requested before the city for action, and then from the applicant, and then $60,000 in addition to that recommended by staff before the council. So that includes a total of $700,000, which is what the loan agreement is currently written as. However, if you were to take out that $100,000 that was actually not required to be paid, and then add in the cost of a performance bond, which is a discussion of in the staff report, and I'm going to elaborate on it, then the total amount for the project, basically the $700,000 minus the 100, but then adding back in the cost of the bond element, or bond estimate, would be $635,000 net total from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund should the council choose to approve the project in its substance, the loans in its substance, and also agree to fund the cost of the performance bond. So I wanted to discuss the performance bond, so.
If I could just interject to clarify. When, when Director House is saying that, that $100,000 is not required, that's not to imply that it's the city making a discretionary decision to waive those. Rather, it is the city's determination that those fees simply don't apply under the terms of our ordinance because the project was deemed not to have those specific impacts. It's an important thing to bear in mind or to make a clear record on. The dollars and cents don't really change either way. Sorry for that interruption.
Thank you very much. So a performance bond is essentially a bond that, or an insurance policy for a project to, to be constructed should the developer go bankrupt or, some way or another, not be able to finish the project. It's very common for entities, jurisdictions, in approving a subdivision or a discretionary action for another project, to require a performance bond for the public improvements. You can imagine if a city had approved a subdivision that required a storm drain, and then the developer ends up not building the subdivision, but those lots are created, there are still the stormwater impacts associated with those new parcels, and so the city would require that the developer bond for the improvements of the stormwater, the sidewalks, et cetera, to make sure those get built even if the developer isn't able to construct them. That's just an example. Currently, because there is public financing for this project in the form of a loan, the loan documents identify that the developer is required to get a performance bond for the overall project, all of the development on the site, to ensure that the project gets built should something occur to Calistoga Affordable Housing and they are not able to finish it themselves. It's essentially an insurance policy for the city that their funding will actually result in the project getting built. We, there was some back and forth regarding the overall cost of it. I believe Calistoga Affordable Housing has done some additional research and budgeted the overall cost of $35,000. Staff has called some insurance firms who provide performance bonds and agrees with that number. That is, that is an accurate estimate ballpark as to what a performance bond will cost. They're somewhat based on credit ratings and those types of things, but I believe it's, it's the applicant's intent to have their, their contractor pull that performance bond, which is appropriate, and they, their reputable contractor is probably in a position to do so. However, this is why staff included that $35,000 back into the potential net cost from the trust fund because it should be anticipated if that requirement is put on the project, it'll either, it'll increase the bond, the project budget by $35,000. Whether the council wants to fund that or not is purely at their discretion, but it is something that the council should be aware of.
Finally, just a question right there.
Finally, just a question right there. Was the performance bond included in the original bid by Helmers?
I don't believe it was.
Okay, because that would make a difference. Okay.
The revised documents do include it.
I understand that. I saw that. Okay.
But I don't, so in discussion with Calistoga Affordable Housing, and Larry can add to this, the performance bond was somewhat of a surprise to them. So they were not anticipating that need. And so because of that, that hadn't been in their budget. And then when staff said, well, no, it's a very important thing. We feel for the council to feel secured if they're going to grant this loan, then their budget increased, obviously, and that's why it's added to the discussion. Along those same lines, the city staff had limited the $100,000 of the overall amount to be loaned until all the public improvements had been done. Because if they weren't going to require a performance bond, staff wanted some other mechanism to at least ensure that the public improvements were constructed. However, should the council require a performance bond, staff feels that that limitation on the $100,000 funding being held could go away, and that's currently in the resolution. So that would obviously be deleted should the performance bond be maintained. Sorry.
The $100,000 is separate from retention? The one, this $100,000 that you're talking about?
It's included in the total overall amount, which is $700,000 currently. But it was identified as not to be issued, or no funds of, that $100,000 funding will be limited until all the public improvements are installed. It's essentially serving as a performance bond for public improvements when one was not previously required.
So under the current, if we're looking at a current loan amount of $635,000, what you're saying is you're going to hold back dispersing $100,000 until the public improvements are?
As it's currently written.
And what are they exactly? Is it just water and sewer?
And sidewalks. It's very limited. Very limited.
Okay. I'm a little confused. When I read the documents, I read the performance bond, and I was thinking of a typical AIA, American Institute of Architects, payment and performance bond, which normally the contractor would get. And it's, you know, the surety is backing up the fact that the contractor's going to perform. And if the contractor went bankrupt or something, you know, people would be paid. So that's.
That's correct.
And I'm.
And that's why I asked my question. I didn't want that to be, they're doing it, but we're requiring it again. And we don't want two performance bonds. I mean, they're required.
That's exactly right. So that's what I'm saying. The $100,000 that's currently in the resolution was written in prior to the requirement for the performance bond being budgeted. So that's just a clarification. So if the council chooses to approve the project loan and require the performance bond, staff would recommend that that $100,000 withholding come out, because it's essentially, exactly like you said, it's redundant.
But I think we should clarify whether the contractor is providing a performance bond as part of his bid, if he's, if that's in his, in which case it comes out of ours entirely. And we're just a co-obligee. You know, we'd benefit from it. So that would be one thing. They could maybe let us know. Save $35,000.
I could add a little bit of clarification. There's actually two separate bonds. So one is between the developer and the city, which is more like a subdivision improvement bond.
Right.
Something like that. Then there'd be a separate bond if the contractor and the developer wished to enter in a separate agreement. That would be different.
Right.
Yeah.
But in theory, if part of the project is putting in the public improvements, if you had the payment and performance bond, in theory, it covers that. But I understand, generally in city business, you want your own bond for your own property.
So based on all that, it's recommended by the community improvement department that the city council consider the request from Calistoga Affordable Housing for the additional $200,000 for the Turley Flats Affordable Housing Project, for not to exceed total of $700,000. Obviously, there's flexibility in what the council, the amount the council wants to loan, based on the discussion. Approve the loan documents for the Turley Flats Affordable Housing Project, including all the documents discussed by staff. Accept the emergency vehicle access across 1121 Pope Street, and authorize the city manager or designee to execute the loan documents substantially in the form presented to the council. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions. Ms. Block is here, who's a city attorney who worked on the documents multiple times. And for, over the last year, I know. And Larry Krollman here is with Paul Coats, his project manager and Calistoga Affordable Housing representative, if they have a presentation. I'm available for any questions.
All right. Are there any further council, initial council comments? Let me, let me go back to the performance bond, the $35,000. Because looking at the chart, that brings the total to $635,000 after the $100,000. Now, is that $35,000 currently in the loan documents?
There is language requiring the performance bond in the loan documents. And the loan is currently for $700,000. So that $35,000 would be in there, as it's currently written. I'm anticipating the council may want to reduce that overall loan amount based on this discussion. So yes, it is currently there.
All right. So what you're saying is that, if I'm understanding this properly, is assuming that we are able to get, or the applicant is able to get the bond in the neighborhood of $35,000, then the overall loan amount could be reduced from $700,000 down to $650,000, or some number like that.
Yes. That's exactly right. And the project is still not fully funded. So it's important for the council to realize that. And Mr. Krollman can elaborate on it. But I believe there's a little bit over $100,000 in funding still, based on the budget and the amount of funds requested and committed, that the project is still short. So the council could see leaving the amount at $700,000 to provide additional funds to the applicant to address that shortfall, but that's purely before the council.
Okay. Well, let me hear from the.
That's an important point.
Let me hear from the applicant.
Larry Krollman, Calistoga Affordable Housing. And I have Paul Coats with me, who was, has been our partner from the start of this. And Paul is a very prominent contractor in our area, and is also the chairman of our planning commission. I received the revised documents last night and did my best to review them and try to take it all in. And I'm not as well-versed in the legal terms as the attorneys and some of you are. I just want to, first of all, kind of mention that this whole project was started because Larry Turley went to a shelter Thanksgiving Day and discovered seven families that had been evicted and came back. So angry, he went down and purchased the property. And then, over the next year, donated it to us with the provision that we provide housing to help his workers and other workers in the valley that needed housing. There's some other specifics I won't go into. We took on the project. And then about that time, there was a lawsuit that was filed against the city and against the former landowner. It has taken us quite a long time to figure out how to construct the project so that it met the needs of the city. Particularly, keeping in mind that St. Helena is a unique city, as is Calistoga. You're a small town, and you have some, some very, I think, very ideal themes that you want to see in your, in your city. So we couldn't just go in and just pop in a regular affordable housing project. It needed to meet the culture of the city. And also, we had to make it three-story in order to meet the density and the parking and all the requirements. I'll go into that. In doing that, it made the project more expensive to do. And, but we were able to find ways of doing that. But all that took time, took a lot of research and discussing with the city staff and with the architects. And the result of that is, we missed the golden opportunity that just after the recession, building was far less expensive. We were shocked when we went out this last summer and got actual bids on the final plans. This project doubled in cost. And so the only thing we could do is go out and raise it. This project has to get done. I think we're all in agreement on that. The city needs it. We need to get it done. And Larry Turley is constantly on me that we need to get this thing done. And we have made a commitment to do that. What I wanted to explain is that the cost of the project is really not that high. And we're at $229 a square foot. That's pretty low for the Napa Valley. The reason it is so costly is that you can only get bank loans and mortgages for about 50% of the cost of the building. If Paul were to go out and do it the way he normally does, he could get 100% from a bank, or at least 90%. So we're stuck with trying to find 50 to 55% the cost of the project from somewhere. Obviously, CEH, we don't have that kind of money. I mean, we're a nonprofit that's here to assist the city. So that's why we had to contact the county. When I went to the county, the head of housing, Larry Florence, said, you know, you're at the close of this thing. You're about ready to go. And we, as a county, we're here to help projects that are ready to go. But what we want to see is a matching program. So that's why we came back to the city for additional amounts. The county is putting money in. We had to go back to the bank and say, can you give us another $100,000? And all of this is still in the works, and they're waiting for the city to put the first shoe in. And then the others will follow suit with what their commitments are going to be. As Noah mentioned, we're still, right now, $73,000 out. I still have to raise another $73,000. It's probably no surprise to you that going out to raise money in the county for a St. Helena project is not the easiest thing to do. Because the city of Napa are also put housing in high gear, and most of the nonprofit money is going into the city of Napa. And when I go to the various foundations, and I'm used to going to them, we've raised quite a bit of money each year from those foundations. But because of the earthquake and the fire, the majority of nonprofit money is going in that direction. And what I'm hearing, when I go to ask, is that that's the city of St. Helena's problem. You know, they're, they've had a lawsuit in the settlement. They're supposed to come up with that money. And I know that that's, to St. Helena, it's not, it's not good news. And I don't think it's accurate news. I think the whole community needs to come together to solve these problems. And I think, I really want to thank the city for stepping up and being willing to not only give the $140,000 more, but $200,000. But from what I've just heard here today, which is news to me, is that you're really only looking at voting $635,000, which means I have to go out and raise another 100 grand besides the 73. You know, we're up against some deadlines here with the bank. We're up against deadlines regarding city codes. We've got to move now on this project. And I guess I would prefer just to say, you know, what are your questions? And we'll do our best to answer them. But I really, I think that the council has the idea that the money that they're putting up is a loan-type thing. Well, technically, yes, but it's really a grant. That's what the lawsuit did. Said you need to put so much money in. It's an investment from the city's standpoint. And as Noah said, realistically, you're not going to have that money paid back, at least for 50 years. Okay? The cost of operating the project, there is going to be, we project, $10,000 a year in excess funds. And then we're going to take that excess funds, and 50% of that is going to be used by CEH to pay off other things of the project. And the other 50% is going to be divided between the city and the county as repayment. But one thing that you're probably not clear on is that the expenses that we're allowed to deduct for that residual payment is quite restricted by the state. They only allow us to expend so much from an accounting standpoint, so much for various aspects of maintenance. And I'll just give you an example. We have a residual loan with the city of Calistoga on a project. We're supposed to pay on their estimates, we're supposed to pay $5,000 to $6,000 a year. Over the last five years, we have paid an average of $200, because that's all that the project can produce. In this, in this town and in the city of Calistoga, rent is extremely expensive. But to make it affordable, okay, it takes subsidy from somewhere to make up that difference. And that's one of the reasons why we ask that the project be 100% affordable. Because that's where the need is. You don't have a big need for moderate housing. You have a huge need for affordable housing. So Paul and I are here to answer questions that you may have on the project. But we kind of look at this thing, from our viewpoint is, we're here to assist the city in developing housing. There isn't anything really that is in this that's going to help CEH. We've already expended out our reserves on this project. When you say there's a $60,000 fee in there, that's to pay CEH back for the money we've already put out. Whether we're going to stay around to finish it, I'll guarantee you. In Calistoga, affordable housing has built over 50% of all housing in the last 15 years in Calistoga. But that's not saying very much, because not much housing has been built. And we are here as a service. And I just, I would hope that the city council would understand that this, what you're putting in is an investment into the housing for your community. And to expect you're going to have that money paid back, I don't think is realistic. So both Paul and I are here to answer any questions, specific questions you might have.
Can you, can you describe what the role of the builder's rep will be during the course of the project if we are so inclined to grant this grant, as you say, loan?
Well, having a builder's rep is a little, is a little unusual. The fact of the matter is, Paul was, Paul was one of those that helped start on this project.
I know Paul Coats very well.
Yes.
Tell me what his role is.
Well, his role is, he is the behind-the-scenes organizer and the facilitator of the project. But he had to, we had to, we couldn't go with Paul's construction bid, because it was higher than, than, and the basic reason for that is, Paul's crews are small. Doug Helmer's crews are large. I mean, Helmer's crews did this. They do an awful lot of big projects that are big from our standpoint.
I want to ensure that the project actually gets completed. Can you focus on that part of it? What would be his role in making sure the project gets completed?
That's his role. He serves as an advisor. That's why he's here tonight. He is, he is the experienced one that understands affordable housing. Okay? And we need him to keep us moving forward in the right direction. That's what his, and at this, I'm going to let him speak for himself. Okay?
That's fine. I had another question. That'd be great if he does. Another question to you before you sit down. Who is going to be managing the day-to-day operations once it finally gets built?
The official management, we've done by Crown Realty. They do our other properties and things. CEH will do the behind-the-scenes management of the, of the project itself. But the day-to-day is run by Crown Realty.
I would just add, I would just add that that is critically important. From my experience, having that manager be active and not just taking rents, because there are so many issues that could be resolved at the front end, community types of issues. And I don't know much about Crown Realty. I know they're all over Napa County. I understand that they do that. But we, that's important to me, to make sure that those issues get resolved early on with clear guidelines to, to the tenants. And having a sense of what is appropriate for that difficult space. space.
Yeah. And that's what Crown Realty, they're the ones in the business, they know the law, which is constantly changing. They're the ones to help from the tenant standpoint. CEH is going to still be in charge of the operation of the project on a larger base type thing.
Paul, go ahead.
There's something I do want to mention. For anybody who's watching, this came up last week, and I brought it up a few months ago. But it's important to say that this project is in St. Helena, in St. Helena, even though it's being put together by Calistoga Affordable Housing. And I just wanted to make sure to mention that, if anybody's watching is confused, that the project is in St. Helena.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, and it started by community members of St. Helena.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Coats, a couple of things. First of all, I've got all kinds of names tonight, today, this afternoon. I'm a manager, I'm a partner, and anyway. A couple of things I'd like to say for...
They even said you're prominent.
Yeah, you're going to get yours in a second. I want to thank Noah. I met him halfway through the project. He kind of came in the middle, and as you, especially as the new council members, find it's rather difficult to grab everything and try to understand it in a short period of time. Did an awesome job. He's a keeper, so tried to keep him around. Has one flaw. I called him about 20 times in the last six months, and he only returned my call 19 times. Sorry, Noah. And as for Mr. Doring, I served with him as a council member, and I was the vice mayor of the city of Calistoga, a few years ago now. And I noticed that Councilman Doring, you still come almost a little late, and I noticed that the city clerk held the door open for you. So, I don't know what you've got going for you, but it must be really working. So, that being said, I'll move on from there. I'm just, I'm kind of helping. I'm a liaison to try to help with Noah and CAH and the general contractor to stay together, to listen to each other, and to move forward and get the project completed, as Councilman Doring knows me well. Probably before CAH, I probably built 100% of affordable housing the 20 years previous for the city of Calistoga, which is something I'm very proud of. I probably built, I don't know, what, 150 homes in Calistoga, too? I don't know, something like that. So, I have a lot of expertise. I believe in affordable housing. I grew up very poor, so I know how difficult it is for families to achieve a place that they can call home. So, this is your opportunity. I know that the Rena numbers are, the cities are being leaned on constantly, as well as the county, to get affordable housing out there. And they tell you how many numbers, your goal, I don't know how many yours is. And they're very difficult to meet, as Larry has explained. This is an opportunity. It's pricey. Nothing's not pricey. Privately, he is correct. It's easier for private developers to borrow money, if they're qualified, obviously, and they have the history. But they don't want to do it anymore. It's just too difficult, because of the environmental, and all the new laws that keep coming up every 12 months, and that continues to drive the cost up. So, the risk is out there. So, it falls back on the cities, counties, municipalities, to pick up the slack and do this. And I think that's what's presented to you here today. It's not wonderful. I'll be the first one to say, it's not wonderful. I have sat in your seat and looked at these kind of things. But it's an opportunity. This project is ready to go. It just needs your approval. And my understanding from everything that I know at this point, I've kind of been involved with it for four years, is that it's been put together, and people are ready to move forward if you, council members today, can initiate the first step. And obviously, other things don't happen, even if you approve it, unless all the other people fall in line. So, you are protected in that sense. So, everything has to happen a certain way. But I think it's orchestrated. I think it's there. And I'll be glad, if I can, to answer your questions as accurately as I can. But I do understand what your decision-making process and what it takes, and it's not easy. I absolutely understand hesitancy, and I think the questions by the newer council members are quite on point, because you've come in in the middle of something that's very complicated. And I sometimes want to make sure I understand it, and I've been chasing it around for four years. So, I may not be able to answer your questions, but I will do my best, if you have any. If not, I would love to sit back down.
All right. I've got a question for Mr. Coleman, I think.
Oh, okay.
Just to, I just want to be sure I understand the numbers here.
I just wanted to comment, one comment. I would say that almost late means on time.
Let me see if I just understand the numbers. You came in here today hoping that we would loan $700,000. And you're saying that if we agree to $700,000, you're still $73,000 short.
Correct.
And you're further saying that if we impose the performance bond on you, then you're going to be $108,000 short.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I add?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of confusion here. First of all, looking at the Helmer proposal...
Which one do you have? Do you have the latest one?
January 26?
Yes.
Okay. The last line item in their proposal summary is a performance bond, payment performance bond, 2%. So, the general contractor is already providing that? We would just be a co- colleague, and I don't believe we need to pay for it. It's already in the bid.
That's in there because I asked him to put it in. If the city is requiring a performance bond, which is what I heard at the last meeting, okay? I told Doug, you need to put that in, because he is the best source to pick up that performance bond.
And that...
And that performance bond is only for the work that he is doing. It does not cover the factory.
Right. But my point is, your, his bid is $1,765,330, which is your budget number. So, your budget number had already included the cost of the performance bond.
No, they added that after we started talking about it.
Right. But I was saying, when you look at this sheet, it's in here.
But if you also look on that, we're, he also added another $35,000 to come from the city to pay for that. That's also in that budget.
Well, I just want to make sure we're not paying for it twice. It's in here, in the bid amount, as part of the cost of construction. And normally, the contractor pays for it, and you're paying him. And that's just one point. On the $100,000, we're not asking...
Wait, wait, wait. Let's see if we can get this straightened out here. Do you want to respond to that again?
In our negotiations with the city through Jennifer, one of the first things we discussed with our attorney and Jennifer was the need of a performance bond. When we went back to our partners, Burbank Housing and some of the others, they said, you know, it's really not feasible to do that. Here's what we do. We use this commitment letter instead of that. So, we have not included a performance bond in our thinking. It was until the last couple of weeks, when it was brought to our attention, that the city was going to require that. All we can say is, all right, but we need to find the money to pay for that, okay? And I heard, thought I heard the mayor say, if we're going to require it, then we should probably pay for it. So, that's why I put it into the budget. You'll notice it's a separate line item. It's also included in the income section, another $35,000 coming from the city.
Which page are you referring to? I just want to make sure it's not accounted for twice, is my point. And on the issue of the $100,000, we originally thought we were loaning you $100,000 to pay fees that were never going to be required to be paid. And I thought you had built that into your original numbers and your project costs.
We didn't know that until about three days ago.
Right. But the point is, if you don't have to pay those fees, we don't need to loan you the money, and your whole project cost comes down accordingly. So, it comes out in the wash, if you follow me.
From our viewpoint, we look at the whole project. Originally, the city was going to give us part grant, part loan, okay? Now, the documents are, it's 100% loan. From our viewpoint, we look at that as one block of money. We don't divide that up going into, this money's going to go only for this type thing. We look at it as one package.
But she's saying, she's saying there was $100,000 expected to be paid for impact fees, and that originally, you must have built that into your budget.
Yes.
Now, that's going away, so your budget has to be reduced accordingly, right?
Yes, as far as that is concerned, yes. But the total need, we were out $180,000. When that $100,000 was reduced, then it dropped down to $80,000. What I'm saying is, we're looking at the total budget. We still have money yet to raise. It doesn't make sense to me that the city is going to go in and take away $100,000 that we need for the project.
No, I understand, I understand your argument, given that there's still a gap.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Right. So, I guess my bottom-line question to you is, assuming that the council said, okay, $700,000, and we wish to increase that by $35,000, that brings us to $735,000, you still have a gap of $73,000.
That's correct.
And I guess the question I have is, was your expectation of being able to fill that gap, or are you going to be coming back to us and saying, we need another $73,000?
Yeah. Well, it would be far easier for me to say to the city, we need that $73,000. But I understand that you guys have probably reached your limit. So, I have gone to the other foundations, the Gasser Foundation is one of the main ones, and I'm going to also ask the county to increase theirs. We will get that money, but I'm prepared to tell you, it's harder to get now.
No, I understand that.
And, but we will, we will, we will get it. It's just...
Mr. Mayor, I often play the role of the wet blanket here, but I do need to remind the council as well, that the agenda for today specified a $700,000 cap. So, if the council is inclined to exceed 700, the matter would have, you'd be only able today to go up to the $700,000. You'd need to come back on a re-agendized item to increase that amount.
I'd like to point something out, which I think is relevant, and thank you, Ms. Block, for doing so. So, here's the most up-to-date budget that is provided. So, you'll see that the total site work and cost identifies 1.765, and that total number includes the performance bond for Mr. Helmer. And then, if you go down to the performance bond and the soft cost, that's also included there. So, in this budget, it does appear that the performance bond is counted twice. However, it also anticipates a total loan amount of $700,000, and finds that the project is still short $73,000. So, it's worth noting that at $700,000, the project would still be underfunded by about $40,000 or so, based on the numbers provided.
It seems to me it's a kind of a, just cleaning up, identifying the $35,000 once, and just making sure that, and then we figure out the other stuff, but just making sure it's not twice.
Well, let me, are there, any other questions of the applicant here? Yes, I'm going to open it for public comment. Thank you very much. Yeah. Is there any public comment? And then...
Well, my head is kind of spinning. My name is Bobby Monette, and I'm speaking as a resident. But I did have a question when Noah was doing the staff report. First of all, if we don't get these done, I think you mentioned there's a milestone? I think that's the word you used, yes. And at first, you said that if it's a milestone, it would be met if the project were approved. And then, I thought I heard you say after, it would be met, when the project is constructed. So, first, I wanted to know which one of that is crucial. I mean, that is correct. And secondly, if we don't meet it, that's $500,000 fine. So, I think that is a really important thing to remember when going ahead with this project, you know? So, I just like to see the answer to that.
Sure. So, the milestones are identified as approving or constructing. So, it's one or the other. Given that this project is already approved, construction of this project would be required in order to meet that milestone.
It needs to be finished?
Yes.
By June? No, by next December?
December 31, 2018.
Is that possible?
This construction, or this project has a very condensed schedule, given that the units are built off-site. So, the units are built in a factory. It's relatively quick. They build the podium, and then they essentially assemble them on the property and put a roof on it. So, it's a much faster method of construction than typical stick framing.
So, it's expected to be?
100%.
And if it isn't, we'll be fined $500,000?
Well, it's not a fine. It's a, we would have to pay $500,000 from the general fund into the housing.
I see. Okay. But still, okay. But it is a...
That's what we wish to avoid. Okay. Thank you very much.
The way the Calderon settlement reads, it requires for this specific project, if this is a project that we use to satisfy the second milepost, it requires that this project actually have a certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Well, all right. Well, let me close the public hearing. Ms. Block, you've been sitting quietly. Do you have anything to say here?
The only thing I would add that may not be obvious, if you, you know, didn't read every word on the 75 pages or so of loan documents, is that if the council approves the execution of loan documents tonight, there still are a number of steps that the developer has to take before we actually close on the loan and provide funds. And among others, the other sources of financing have to be committed and available to be dispersed. So, the loan documents contemplate execution of the documents, and then a period of time until the closing, when things are recorded and money is dispersed. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
And the execution of the documents at this point in time includes the performance bond?
Includes the requirement that a performance bond be provided, yes.
Better stated. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any further questions of council?
I have a question. Do you have any idea how long it's going to take to negotiate the inter-creditor agreement?
I don't know. I haven't had any communication at all with the lender. So, I think the documents provide for start of construction by July 1, so we do have five months to get there.
And then, construction itself, I think, is six months, I've heard.
And we allowed for a 12-month period for construction.
And today was the first time, I think, I heard or saw that the senior lender is taking 50% of the surplus funds?
I think that's actually not accurate. So, the debt service on the senior loan is part of the...
It's part of the operating cost.
Part of the costs that get deducted from the revenue. And then, the surplus is what's left over, which we would share between the city, the county, and the developer.
So, the development is still, still has some cash to cushion.
Right. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
My apologies for the confusion.
Okay, very good. You may be seated.
Okay.
So, let me, let me say where my head is, at least, on this one. It's clearly, in terms of what's before us, after council said that we can't go over $700,000, it's for the not to exceed $700,000. But also stating that I'm certainly open to increasing that at a future meeting by the $35,000 to cover the bond. I do believe that if we're requiring that, we should pick that up, and it should be part of the loan, part of the total loan package.
I would just caution that you probably don't want to announce that you would be willing to do that in this meeting, when it's not on the agenda, but that's fine.
I'm willing to consider it, strongly.
There's nothing in the Brown Act that precludes the council from indicating what their, what their wishes and considerations are, as long as they don't do it.
All right.
I am, I am so inclined to go up to the $700,000. I want to see this project actually get going, and I think, it sounds to me like it's important that the city of St. Helena makes a commitment, so the other lenders, including the county, has a clear understanding that we're fully behind this project.
First of all, I think it's important to acknowledge that Councilmember Coburnstein has invested a tremendous amount of time. I've been following the sort of the paper trails, as she's been commenting on it, and I'm very proud of the work that she's done. I think I do a lot of real estate. I was following it. You noticed I didn't have a lot of comments, because I thought her points were well-taken. The documents certainly reflect that. I know there was a lot of work done in a short period of time. I have a legal practice. I know that, you know, you have to move things aside to get that done, and the document's pretty well drafted. So, great efforts all around. Then, I would also add, I have the utmost faith and confidence in Paul Coats helping to assist that this project gets done. And that's not because... And that's not because of our relationship, it's because of the building projects I've seen him do. And his reputation stands on its own. It's impeccable. So that was the reason I asked the questions that I did. Frankly, I think we have a strong benefit in having Helmer do this project, another excellent contractor that has built a number of projects in the Napa Valley. So it is good that we're giving business to Napa County contractors, that they have a track record in Napa County. That gives me more comfort, because frankly, you were talking me out of it, Mr. Crowman. I mean, the more, you know, I was becoming more uncomfortable, and it is a risk here. It's a huge risk. But I know that, you know, the notion of this, you know, the likelihood of us ever seeing our $700,000 back, it's not that great. But I think it's absolutely necessary that we commit to this project and get it done. That's why I think it's so important that we, on the council, have as much comfort as possible that it will happen. So that's kind of the reason for some of the harder questions that I've been asking.
Mr. Mayor?
I think I've closed the public hearing. Unless I can reopen it if you have a further, I'll reopen it. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make one observation. This is mostly a modular construction, and modular works totally different than traditional stick-built. This project cannot get started in July. It has to start now, in order for us to get the factories in schedule so that the units come out sometime in April. Trying to get these schedules together has been a real trying part, because about six months ago, all four factories we were working with let us know that they were not, they were going in a different direction, and they would not be building our units. It took three months to convince one of them to come back. And the only reason they did that is because they have a low period in the winter, and that's when we need to get this, the units built and shipped here. So we don't have a lot of time to determine how we're going to do this. Once we have a commitment, then the county and the bank have said that they're ready to step up and to get their part done. I realize that's going to take time. Also, we're dependent upon the city's money to pay for the building permit, which is basically almost done. So we don't have a lot of time.
I understand that. Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Coburnstein?
Yeah, obviously, we all want to see this built. I'm still struggling with some of the numbers here, because I'm having a little difficulty putting them together. And I'm not trying to be stingy. On the other hand, if we put out $700,000 for 30 years, and we've put out $75,000 or $80,000 more than we needed to, and we've committed to do that, it precludes us from addressing other projects in the meantime. And I don't want to quibble over dollars, but, I mean, the other thing I see here in the hard cost is I see the site work contingency built in as a cost. And then, you know, we're funding it on the other side. I'm just, I'm not real clear about how the numbers are shaking out here. And I sort of start from the premise that the cost of the bond is built into the general contractor's agreement on the cost side. So we don't, it's already in the numbers. So I would be very happy for our manager to go through the numbers and make sure we've got everything straight, and we're not double-counting on one side or the other. Just to address your comment, I mean, there are some things that have to happen before the lenders, or between the lenders, before any money can be dispersed. And so, you know, if you're anticipating that you're going to see some money in a week, I think that's not, that's not the way it'll shake out. So I don't know exactly what your expectations are there. I am concerned that we have good project management, and I'm relying on everybody who knows Mr. Coats to be sure that that happens. And I certainly wouldn't want to see him replaced in the middle of the project or anything like that. We want to keep it moving along. So, you know, subject to drilling down on these numbers and making sure we're not double-counting things, you know, at the moment, I'm definitely comfortable with 600, and I'd really like to understand what the gap is at that point. I don't know if it's 40, or if it's more.
Mr. Ellsworth?
I'm still thinking about, sorry, I'm still considering that. So if somebody else has a comment, let me just think for a minute.
I'm prepared to accept the staff recommendation as to 700,000. The applicant has said he's still $73,000 short. We need to move forward with respect to this. And as I said before, if the bond cost is not in there, and he comes back, I would be sympathetic to that. Obviously, there can be a real inspection of the documents to make sure there's no double-count if they come back. So that's not an issue, really, as I see it at this point in time. I don't perceive there to be a double-count at all, but that's something that, to me, is irrelevant today, because we're capped at the 700,000.
Well, I think it's relevant. I mean, every dollar's relevant. I think we need more clarity. I am struggling with this, and I look at these documents all the time, and what's in the budget, and the sort of the moving target here. I think we could certainly add that to a motion that says, you know, that city manager and staff are able to look at this more carefully, to ensure that their, that our interests are protected, and that certain accounting line items are not counted twice. Simple as that.
I agree with that. I think if we're going to be, I think, first of all, it benefits us to have the project move forward. It benefits the people who will live there. I think getting the accounting correct is important, so that we're not, you know, everything we build, we want it to be built on a solid foundation and have the accounting solid too. So looking in there, making sure the numbers are in the right places. But if we're going to be spending the money anyway, you know, we're going to be going up to these numbers if the project needs more money, and it will benefit us and get us where we need to be in the timeframe, then I think, looking at the 700,000, is with the sort of stipulation that we make sure all the accounting is correct for that 35.
Is there any further comment from staff? Either Ms. Mitz or Mr. Matt?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to ask Noah to just briefly spend a moment on what would trigger the site work contingency release of funds? What kind of protections are there? Could you share that with council?
Sure. So actually, all of the funds that are, including the loan, are required to be tied to actual receipts, kind of commitments of funds. So it's not as if a check will be issued for $700,000 to Costco Affordable Housing. Money is doled out as requisitions are provided, as to who that money's going to go for, what the amount is, dollars and cents. I mean, it's essentially, they function as a pass-through to provide the funds directly to their, their suppliers, or their vendors, or to Helmer, et cetera. So it is tied directly to hard costs of the project. Trying to speculate on what could a contingency could come up. One issue that has been, Public Works Director and myself has been working with the developer on, is there's a retaining wall in the, in the back of the property, because it backs up to the creek. The retaining wall appears to be in good shape. However, you know, it's uncertain. They haven't begun excavation, and Public Works Director Palmer and myself have concerns over, you know, the, we don't want to say the wall is concerning, but the construction impacts combined with the existing wall, which is unknown time, unknown construction types, that's an example of a contingency that could arise, which would result in the need for additional funding. And there would be a pool of additional money there, ready to cover that cost, should it arise.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Is there any contingency in the senior loan, in the first loan? Do we know? I mean, normally, there would be.
Contingency in that commercial loan?
I mean, normally, the first loan would have a contingency built in it, too. I'm just trying to understand.
Do you have an answer to that? Do you want to come to the microphone, please?
From the budgeting standpoint, we have tried to concentrate the project into two contracts. So we don't have a lot of problems with liability and warranty issues. So everything is either under Helmer, or it's under the factory. And we don't believe there's any contingency needed for the factory, because that is a, that's a straight contract, you pay this and you get this type thing. The contingency, Helmer believes that he has gone through that thing pretty well, but the one area that they are concerned about is in the drilling, what they're going to find out when they hit through the drilling of the pylons for the wall and the other thing. This building is not going to rest upon the ground, it rests on pylons. So we don't think that's going to affect the wall, but the contingency is there in case we do. We have built money into the wall, but for unforeseen things is what that contingency's for.
Yeah, but my question is, the million-four loan?
Yes.
Does that have contingency money in it? Like ours would have $60,000, does the first loan have any contingency fund?
Again, we're not looking at it from a loan, loan standpoint. We're looking at the whole project. And frankly, your city's money is going to the factory. That's because the, the bank will not pay for the units until they're set on-site. And we have to pay for the units as they leave the factory. So we've, it took us a while, but we've made arrangements with the bank. They're willing to let other money pay for the units to get here, and then their money can flow towards those units also then. So it's going to take county and city monies to pay for the units, and we're looking for many of the bank money to take care of the non-factory items.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Well, where are we at this point?
I'll put a motion together.
So my thinking is that we should have a motion that accepts the staff recommendation, with the understanding that the staff will spend some further time going through the budget and finance numbers, to be sure it's satisfied with the documents that have been presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Black?
Can we?
Oh, discussion, sure.
Um, could we start at 600 and build up, or are we just going to hit the 700 number? Once we have loan documents out there that we're loaning $700,000, that money is not otherwise available until the project, I suppose, is finished, if there are savings?
Yeah, so it is limited to up to 700,000, and that's right. If another project came along, there's a discussion of what's remaining in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. If the council commits the full $700,000, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to my notes here. I believe the remaining balance in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is $410,000. So, getting to Councilmember Coburnstein's point, if another project came along that was requesting some increment above $410,000, that would not be available, because it's previously committed.
I would sort of prefer to start at 600, where we know we have to be, and authorize the staff to increase the amount as necessary, to make sure that we've covered everything without double-counting, or double-charging in any way. So we may end up with 675 or something, or 650.
The motion is, the motion is not to exceed 700,000.
700. So I think it could be up to 700, and...
Well, that's what it says.
So does that mean that the documents are going to come back to us with a different number?
I think we're going to rely on staff.
Yeah, so basically, that's where the, in substantial conformance. So we're looking to council to kind of set the maximum cap, and then obviously, we will, we will take another look at the accounting to make sure that that's all solid before any formal documents are signed. And then obviously, as requisitions come forward, they'll be paid by the city, but it'll be incremental, and there may be a balance remaining. Just getting to your point, we couldn't commit that balance prior to the end of construction. However, again, getting back to the staff point, there's not a lot of projects that staff's aware of. There is some interest to try to find additional projects, but there's nothing that a hard financial number has been requested of staff, as far as a commitment to another project, that staff's aware of. And the construction schedule's relatively short, given, so we feel that we will probably spend the money relatively quickly, and know what the remaining balance is in the trust fund.
All right. Just, given Steve's Public Works Director's comments about, you know, the, oftentimes, there are two performance bonds, I'm not clear where we're going on that. Are we, the city's going to require its own performance bond under our, under this scenario? And of course, Helmer has its performance bond that it's going to do? Is that what we're thinking here? Is that the recommendation?
I mean, that was my recommendation. I'm not sure what we'll add on it after the discussion tonight, but that'd be my recommendation, because the city's obligation is with the developer, not with the contractor, and vice versa. We're not contracting with the contractor, the developer is. So I'm not saying that it's not possible to do it, as Councilmember Coburnstein's suggesting, just it's not typical.
Is...
Oh, you mean the co-shorty situation? Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, that, I understand your issue, but if we withhold $100,000, I don't know at what point we're going to run out of money, if we're being tapped first. Where in the process does the, do you anticipate releasing that?
Typically, the public improvements would be towards the end of the project. Obviously, you don't want, you know, heavy equipment driving over your freshly improved driveways. However, if the council commits the loan amount of 700,000, but withholding the 100,000 plus the 60 as a contingency, the, if the county commits their funds, that will be enough to cover the cost of the modular units coming out of the factory. So it may be a, kind of a sideways approach to your concern, because the money will still be reserved, and it won't be spent until we know that all of the requirements that the city's put on the project are met.
Well, and this would be something we could work out with the other lenders in the agreement, that 100,000 of our money stays put until that point.
And that is how the resolution's currently written.
Okay, good. Okay, was there a second to my motion? Oh, yes, Mr. Ellsworth did. Any further discussion? Ms. Black?
Mr. Mayor, could you repeat the motion for the city clerk's record?
Oh, my goodness.
No.
The motion was, the motion was to approve the recommendation as presented with staff, with the understanding that the administration, meaning the city manager and the finance director, and any delegate, delegate, will go back through the budget and finance documents to ensure that they're in good form, and there's no double-counting.
I would say with a direction to do that.
With a direction to do that.
Perfect, thank you. Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Coburnstein?
Yes.
Ouring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Thank you very much, everybody. This is a very important project to all of us. We absolutely want it to succeed, and it's also very complicated, and these small affordable, affordable housing projects are a tremendous financing challenge, and you've really demonstrated that. But thanks for sticking with it. Most appreciated.
Thank you, council.